Since we can start our meeting. It's seven o'clock, you're all right. Good evening, I will call the common council to order and I will ask the clerk to call the role.
Present our alderperson, Grisham.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
Lysick.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
Roat.
Here.
Stefanski.
Here.
Turner.
Here.
Vitale.
Here.
And Mayor Dan Devine.
Here.
Alderman Weigel and Keen are excused.
Correct.
Please rise if you are able and join us in the pledge of allegiance which will be led this evening by Alderwoman Grisham.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If there's no objection, I'm going to take the agenda out of order and do the mayor's report right away before the public hearings. Some of you might have an inkling that a lot of people are here for a certain reason tonight. I would like to ask Randy if he could come up and join me.
Yeah, well, let's do this first. Yeah. All right. Probably gonna need these. All right. So, I will read this, but I just want to start by turning on my microphone. And then, I want to begin by just talking a little bit about the business. Just wow. I mean, the fact that you're all here and there's nothing really more Milwaukee area, more Wisconsin than a fish fry. And, there's nothing more than community. And, you know, the history of the city and its manufacturing and then people stopping on their way home and meeting friends, neighbors, family for a drink and a fish fry. And it just kept going here and kept going. And, a couple of weeks ago, kind of hit me that Mari kept posting how every Friday night was sold out till last Friday. And I thought, "I'm never going to get my last fish fry." Well, then somebody said, "You can go at lunch." So I went at lunch and I brought a couple new employees. And then one employee couldn't make it, but she had heard so much about the fish fry. We were sitting there and we said, "Oh my God, well, we should just go next Friday again for lunch." And we did. And, everybody now, you know, some of the newer employees in the city are really going to be missing that fish fry. So I will, I will read this. I just want to, I just want to mention, you know, I've had a personal connection with this place. I was actually a chili judge many years ago when you had a competition. So if I didn't vote for any of your chilies, I apologize. I've hosted several of my Coffee with the Mayor listening sessions in the side room there. They would open up in the morning for me and have coffee and bakery set out. And it really was just a strong community business with a long tradition in West Dallas and it's going to be deeply missed. So I hope you all maintain friendships and hang out together and keep, you can keep coming to council meetings if you want to. You're more than welcome. But I have a proclamation that I will quickly read here. Whereas Randy's Neighbor Inn has served the West Dallas community for 45 years as an unassuming, family-owned and operated business known for its best, known best for its fish fry. Whereas beginning in 1978, Max Katzaba opened the bar with his son Randy, just 18-years-old at the time. Randy learned everything there was to know about the business from Max. And whereas in 1983, Randy bought out his father's share of the business, he learned from his Aunt Jewel, the bar's popular fish fry recipe of light and crispy breading in an all-you-can-eat cod, promising to keep it the same and never change it. Whereas Randy's Neighbor Inn has been listed as one of the top five fish fries in Milwaukee County for over 30 years, drawing in regular customers every week from all over the surrounding area and selling thousands of platters of fish. Whereas Katzaba recognizes his late wife Suzanne as one of the reasons Randy's Neighbor Inn has been successful for so many years, as she divided her time between work, helping raise their daughter, and working various positions at Randy's Neighbor's Inn. Whereas the West Dallas community, including many longtime customers accustomed to stopping by every week for fish fry or attendees of Coffee with the Mayor hosted at the restaurant, would like to thank Randy's Neighbor Inn and the Katzaba family for all their establishment has brought to the community. Therefore, may it be known that I, Dan Devine, Mayor of the City of West Dallas, State of Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, March 21st, 2023, as Randy's Neighbor's Inn Day in the City of West Dallas.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much. Thank you, guys, thank you very much. This whole experience, these last probably eight weeks, has been phenomenal, very flattering, very humbling. I said, "This honor tonight is amazing." Thank you to all of you, council, Mayor Devine, for all you to come out tonight is something I'll never forget in the rest of my life. You guys are amazing. You've been coming to that bar for so many years. It's, it's going to be a very sad day on Saturday when it's our closing party. I hope everybody has a great time. Like I said, between the employees I've had all these years and my customers, I love you all. And thank you so much for this honor tonight. I'll, I'll never forget it. So thank you, guys, very much. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, I thought we were really popular for a little while. All right. Okay, thanks, everybody, for your patience. We'll go back to the regularly scheduled agenda. We have, Section D has two public hearings this evening and I will ask the clerk to read the first public hearing.
Public hearing number one, resolution to confirm and adopt the report of interim city engineer containing the schedule of proposed assessments for improvement of various streets and alleys by concrete construction, concrete reconstruction, and/or asphalt resurfacing.
Thank you very much. I'll turn it over to staff, Mr. Hutter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's a tough act to follow. My name is Rob Hutter. I am the interim city engineer and I'm going to give a presentation here tonight on, on the public, sorry, the public hearing on various reconstructions of streets and alleys. There are four different projects. The first is Boone, which will be a new concrete road from 86th to 88th. Second is Arthur Avenue, which will be an asphalt overlay. That's from 76th to 84th. And then we have two alleys. These will both be concrete alleys with brick pavers in the middle. That's between 108th, 109th, Grant and Lincoln. And then also between 58th, 59th, Greenfield and Lapham. Kind of the way this, the outline of how this public hearing will go is I will talk very briefly about this project's scope and the cost. We'll go over the assessments, special assessments. Then we'll field comments and questions from the common council and the citizens. Then this public hearing will be closed and the final decision will be made by the full common council. The reason we are doing the, these streets and the alleys, they all are in pretty rough shape. There's severe cracking in them and they are holding water when it, when it rains. And the water is obviously freezing in the winter. Our alleys will be, like I said, pavers, brick pavers in the middle of the alley to absorb the storm water. And we'll have concrete on the edges of the alley. So it'll be a new concrete alley, but with the brick pavers in the middle, allowing us to capture the storm water rather than having it go directly to a storm sewer. For Boone Avenue, we will be replacing the sanitary sewer in Boone, which is 82-years-old. It's built in 1941, clay sewer with clay laterals. We will be replacing the sanitary laterals from the middle, from the sewer to about the terrace area, the area between the new curb and the new sidewalk. There is not storm sewer in Boone right now, so we will be placing storm sewer in it. And we will be extending laterals if residents want to hook up to those storm laterals. So the approximate cost of Boone, between the pavement and the sanitary storm and the little bit of water main is about $617,000. The cost of Arthur, which is our asphalt resurface road, it's, it's a longer road, so the pavement's a little bit more. And so our cost at Arthur is $784,000. Again, these are very approximate costs. And our two alleys are roughly $277,000. Funding for this job, as you can kind of see in this pie chart, it comes from a variety of sources. There's a water utility, a storm utility, a sanitary utility. We have our citywide property taxes, which are the lion's share of the cost. And then we have our special assessments. Our special assessment, it's, it's a different rate for different projects. And the rate, I'm just using a very, I guess, a generic example of, of the special assessment for the new concrete road on Boone. And that'd be for a 50-foot lot, our, our assessment rate is $111. And that equates to about, a property owner's cost of about $55,800. These special assessments can be paid in one payment. They can be paid over five years or over 10 years on an installment plan. The installment plan comes with an interest rate of 4% and that is simply covering the city's cost of borrowing that money. So the city is not making any money on an installment plan. The bills for, for all of these roads would not be mailed out until about a year from now, in spring or March of 2024. The city specially assesses because it allows us to do more projects. In this case, it's about, it's about 21% of the total cost on these projects is, is what we're getting through special assessments. So it does not come close to covering the cost of the job, but it, it does help us do more work. And for the last 110 years, city, this is kind of how the city has funded many of their construction projects. The assessment rate is based on your lineal footage of property. Doesn't matter how wide the, the city streety are, how wide the street is or how high the traffic volumes are or how high the actual bid prices are. They are, everyone is treated equally. And this also allows us to have businesses or places that don't pay property taxes pay for part of the road. No one is exempt from special assessment, even though there are about 430 properties in the city that do not pay property taxes. If a business, corporation, or manufacturer is on a project, their assessment rate is, is substantially higher than the residents. On the, the schedule for these projects is that they are being, they have either been designed or being designed right now. For Arthur Avenue, we will be asking the residents about how different ways we can calm traffic. We have a lot of speeding on Arthur Avenue. It's right by McCarty Park. So we will be sending out, something out to residents, to the people that are paying the special assessments to determine what we can do as far as traffic calming to get those speeds down. On all these, we will be bidding them in spring, so very shortly, and the construction will be this summer and fall. Residents will be given notice of the construction via U.S. mail. We'll get letters, you'll have, there's a city inspector that will be on the job. The contractor's information will be on the job. And these, these are the people you can talk to, to get answers to various questions you may have. We also have the construction in progress report. And that is, in the construction season, comes out probably a couple times a week, at least once a week, trying to give residents and, and property owners updates as to what's going on on their construction project. With that, I will open it up to members of the council.
Thanks for the presentation. Do any members of the common council have questions or comments on public hearing number one? Alderman Haas.
Yeah, Rob, you had showed the picture of the alley with the brick in the center that's going to absorb some of the storm water, but then there'll still be storm sewer. Yeah, because you can see the catch basin there in the alley as well. Just want to clarify what might be obvious, but make sure it's clear to everybody. Would, would not be just the, the brick pavers that are permeable to collect storm water. Any overflow beyond that then goes still into a storm sewer. Is that correct?
Yes, that storm sewer is just at the very end of the alley and that's kind of a safety measure that if it is a very intense storm or those pavers fail, that we have a way to collect the storm water.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Haas. Any other questions from the common council? See, none. Are there any members of the audience with questions or comments on this public hearing? If there is, I would ask you to please come up to the microphone and give us your name and address. And then, it'll be, need to be turned on by pressing the little person, the light, green light. There we go.
My name is Megan Mattie. My address is 2204 109th Street, West Dallas. So I have a concern about the alley between 108th and 109th and Grant and Lincoln. So that alley is behind my house. There's a fence that actually separates my driveway with this alley. I have no use for the alley. I don't want the alley to be paved. So I just have a concern about funding for this alley because I've, I've no need for it.
The reason we, because your property abuts the alley, that's why you're scheduled for the special assessment. And we don't know, obviously, future owners may or may not want to use that alley, but they, just because it's not being used now doesn't mean it wouldn't be used in the future. And...
Sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was going to say, if I have a driveway already, I don't need the alley. So I don't, and my driveway is paved. So, alley's not paved, I have nothing, I don't care if it's paved or not, since I have my own driveway. And my, my garage doesn't even face this alley.
Right. And it's, it's the way that the city specially assesses is it's based on lineal footage that abuts the alley. So it, it, you know, again, doesn't matter how many people, or if you use the alley or if not, it's based on, on what portion of your property abuts the alley.
Okay.
So, I'm assuming other people need access for that alley? It's not something we could vacate?
Um, it, so my neighbor's house, his garage faces the alley, so it's essentially his driveway. I'm not sure if he got a letter in the mail for paying for this as well, but it's, it's his driveway.
Okay. All right.
It's, it's a gravel alley and I, I guess the reasoning too is it's just that we have very few, if any, gravel alleys in, in the city and, you know, trying to, I guess, enhance the, the aesthetics of the alley.
I've got nothing else.
Okay. I don't care about the aesthetics of the alley.
Right.
I don't use it.
Right.
I don't need it.
I understand. I understand. All right. Thank you.
Do I have to hit this button?
Yeah, if you can. Thanks. Oh, Mike, I'm sorry, could you turn on the microphone? Push the button with the little person on it, so it lights up green. There you go.
Bingo. Okay. My name's Mike Wojcik. I live on Arthur Avenue, where you guys are going to come through and redo the street. I got two questions. One, how long ago was it that We Energies came through and put that new gas line in?
A few years ago. I'm not, I'm not 100% sure I, you know, that's, We Energies and the city are separate entities.
Yes, one day then, who came for the, retaining the portion of Arthur Avenue that would be torn up with a new pipeline?
That would be We Energies.
I think, I'm sorry, Mike, I think you might have turned your microphone off or it might have turned off.
I'm not good with equipment, okay.
That's all right. These are sort of new also, so.
Okay. When, when they came through with this gas pipeline, I watched these chain-linked devices that weigh in excess of 200,000 pounds laying down this pipe and tearing up the concrete. And as they came through, the con, this Arthur Avenue was coming up with it. And after that, there was countless cement mixers in excess of 65,000 pounds laying down concrete. Granted, Arthur Avenue needs some work, okay? But, We Energies just hurried the process. Are they going to be responsible for any of this or are the property owners are?
No, We Energies... At least the property owners are, but I mean... Yeah, We Energies would not, there's not funding from We Energies for this job, right?
Well, so then you're going to lay it on the property owners?
Well, it, it's funded through our utilities, through our taxes, and through our special assessments, correct.
Yeah, but like I said, we need a new street. But like, when they put in that, that gas line, it made things a lot worse. And that'll, that'd be five, six, seven, eight years ago, I can't remember.
Yeah, but We Energies, yes, they, they put in the gas line, they restored the pavement, but, but no...
And they were responsible for the pavement they restored?
Yes, they paid to restore the pavement, correct.
You don't think that issue should be addressed with We Energies and heavy-duty equipment coming through and further deteriorating Arthur Avenue to the point of where it is now?
Well, it's, it's, it's not my call whether We Energies would pay for it or not. I mean, We Energies is a utility with a gas line in the road and, and they had to replace that gas line and they replaced the pavement that was disturbed because of that gas line.
And what about the rest of the street that was torn up? Who makes the call that where this liability falls on? You or the common council?
It's, as far as whether utility...
No, I, who's paying for it?
And who's paying for it? Well, it's...
It's a private company.
Yeah. We Energies has a permit, they applied for a permit, permit to be there. They had to upgrade their facilities.
Right.
But they, they did restore the road that was damaged by upgrading the facility.
Yeah, well, okay, I don't know what you mean by restore. They, they filled up what they tore up with asphalt, which, how long does that last? The next phase of thaw?
They, they restored in kind. So if it was concrete, they put concrete back. If it was asphalt, they put asphalt back.
I don't think they ever put concrete in to what they tore up.
Well, yeah, they, they generally restore with what was out there.
Okay. I'm just, you know, I, as a property owner, you know, like I said, we need a new street. And when they did this project, it just made it a lot worse. A lot worse. Like I said, I watched this equipment come through and as it came through, pieces of Arthur Avenue were coming up with it. So, you know...
And Arthur...
That issue should have been addressed maybe back then, no?
Well, yeah, I, I, I guess, but Arthur Avenue is also a significantly old street. So, you know, they, they replaced the portion that was torn up by their work.
Right.
So...
But not, they didn't address the issue of the heavy equipment coming through and further deteriorating Arthur Avenue to the point where it is now?
No, but I, I think with the age and the traffic on Arthur Avenue, it, it's not just from We Energies doing the work, I guess, is my...
I kind of beg to differ with you because I watched this equipment come through. And like I said, with these 200,000-pound, you know, chain-linked devices, I seen Arthur Avenue coming up with it, so.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is David Page. Live at 7707 West Arthur. I'm Mike's neighbor and I, I agree with Mike about the heavy equipment. However, I have some other questions regarding what is actually going to be done on the street. The notice that we've got says it's going to be resurfaced and then covered with asphalt. In your presentation, I saw sewer lines and storm sewer. Is that all part of that as well?
What we'll be doing on Arthur Avenue is replacing some storm sewer. And it's a little bit of sanitary sewer, but it doesn't require the entire storm sewer and sanitary sewer to be replaced. Those are at an age that they're still functioning without being replaced.
Okay.
So the most, the highest budget item on this is, is the pavement.
Okay. So along with that, like Mr. Wojcik was talking, when they tore that street up, we live on the south side of the street. The north side of the street all got new curb line and driveway approaches. Is that going to be impacted on the south side of the street?
No, there, we would replace the curb and driveways if they were in, in need of it, if they were deteriorated that quite badly. But we won't be replacing the driveway approach or the curb unless it's needed. This is just an asphalt overlay.
Okay. And as far as the timeline for the project, you said, spring, summer? I mean, are we talking all summer?
Well, this would be something, I believe, Arthur Avenue is a little bit later, so probably start later summer and then extend into fall. And just looking, Arthur Avenue is paved between, on those eight blocks, between 1963 and 1967. So it's, it's, you know, pretty old. Some portions are 60-years-old.
Well, yeah, I'm not disputing the fact that something needs to be done. We've been living there for 24-years and, I mean, it's, it's never been good.
Right.
But I do have to agree with Mr. Wojcik in the fact that the heavy equipment that came down that road while We Energies was replacing that pipeline, it was bad to begin with. It was far worse afterwards. And, I'm with Mike of the opinion that We Energies should be held accountable for some of that. And, I mean, whether there's anything you guys can do about that or not, it still doesn't change the fact that I think that they had a hand in a quicker deterioration of that road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Judy Oswald. I live at 7737 West Arthur. I'm the corner lot. My house was the one that took the most damage when they did do the road construction there. They rode over my curbs and broke them. Half of my apron of my driveway is broken now. They keep putting asphalt in the cracks of the road, yet they're expecting people to drive over them to pack them in. It's up against my curb. How is somebody going to pack it in? I don't think it was fair to me. They didn't fix the road back the way it was. And now it's all cracked up. And all your broken stones and everything is, people are throwing it up on my, on my grass and on my driveway. And, you know, is it hitting my windows? I don't know. And you're expecting me to pay twice for something? Property taxes are supposed to be for the roads also. And now you want me to help pay also extra? When they broke my road in the first place?
You, you didn't have a special assessment for the We Energies work, correct? You said paying twice, I guess I'm a little...
Twice. You have, you're going to be... Twice, you have, you're gonna be taking property taxes to pay for that road also, correct?
Yes.
And then you want almost $4,000 from everybody also? They ruined our road in the first place. It, they didn't fix it the way they should have when they got done, and then driving up on my property and making ruts in my grass and breaking my curbs and stuff?
Ms., Ms. Oswald, can I ask if, um, when that happened, did you contact the We Energies contractors, or?
Uh, no, I went to City Hall, and I talked-
For the We, okay.
Yeah, I talked to a girl about it, and she went in to talk to her boss or whoever she was talking to, and they were giggling about it, and that's all I got.
'Cause that would have, I mean, that was, I, I think you know, it's not, that was not a city project, that was the private utility that did that project, so if they were driving on your-
How do I know who to talk to? I'm just a citizen.
I understand, I'm just saying-
And I would think-
That they usually give you a le, a letter when they're doing work with a contact person or a foreman, or, at least the city stuff does, I would assume the utilities put door hangers or letters when they're-
I was expecting they would do their job correctly, like I have to.
That's fair.
If I don't do my job correctly, I work for aerospace, what would happen?
I'm not defending him, I'm just asking what took place.
Well, but we're paying for it now because they didn't do it right, so.
Well, and it, right, right.
And I tried to talk to who I was supposed, I tried to talk to my cit, city about it.
Right.
And maybe they shouldn't have laughed at me and, and took care of it instead.
I wish you would have called me when that happened also, in hindsight.
Again, I talked to my alderman once because of the snowplows coming through at four in the morning and constantly backing up at the park. Well, my bedroom is right there, and they would wake me up, and I'd have to go to get up at 5:30. I don't need to get up earlier, and he told me to buck it up, roll over, and go back to sleep. That was my alderman.
Hope you don't vote for them next time.
Well, no, I won't.
Yeah.
But, I mean, you're hearing it now, and you're also trying to make us pay for it, uh, you know, when it was supposed to be done correctly the first time.
Right.
That's not right, and my house took the brunt of most of it.
Right.
Because that's where it's the worst, and where do we go? Where are we gonna, where am I gonna be parking? I can't get to my driveway.
It's an asphalt overlay, so you, you will have access to your driveway most of the time, because there, it's just an asphalt overlay, they're not tearing out the street. And if there's a night, if there's some concrete work in your driveway or near it, they would give an overnight parking pass, but on an asphalt overlay, you do have access to your driveway most of the time.
And that's it?
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I thought, thanks.
Thank you. Any other?
Hi, Mary Jo Miller, 8733 West Boone. Uh, so I've got two things, uh, one is, could you just talk a little bit about accessibility to our houses, all of the houses on, uh, 86, I'm sorry, on Boone? They don't have an alley, all we have is driveways. I live with my daughter and my three-year-old granddaughter, so I have concerns about accessibility to our house, not having to park far away or on a different street, that would cause a hardship to us.
Well, yeah, while this, the sewer work is going on, and, um, while they're setting up to grade the road, you will have access to the driveways, but when they start doing the concrete curb and gutter and the concrete road, that's when, uh, you will not have access, and that's the time where, when you'll have to park on adjacent streets. And it, it is certainly in a hardship, um, I don't, you know, deny that, but that's, unfortunately, with concrete, that's, um, there has to be a curing time for that concrete, and the, and the contractors do try to, you know, work as efficiently as they can to get the concrete cured, and, and they do it in steps, so it's the least amount of time for the residents.
Okay, and when would Boone be scheduled?
It's scheduled to, um, start, I, I, it's, it, it all depends on if the bids come in and, and various things, but it's, uh, probably starting in June, but you will receive letters in the mail before that work starts. And again, the first, the first, um, activities on the street will be the sewer work, and at that time, you, you do have access to your homes, your driveways.
And do you know the approximate length of time that this will take?
Um, I, uh, it, it will be a few months, definitely, it's a complete reconstruct, and, and they are doing a lot of utilities underneath the ground. Um, I, I can, as I get a schedule from the contractor, when we get the contract, then, then that's when we send letters out to the residents, giving them an idea of how much time.
Okay, and when you say June, you're talking 23 or 24?
Yes, 23.
23, and the bills will be sent when most of the construction is completed?
Well, they won't be sent until March of 24.
24, okay. Which leads into my next question. The woman just before me made reference to $4,000 in a special assessment. If Arthur is longer and costs more, why am I paying 6,500 and their 4,000?
It's all based on your lineal footage of property, um, so the, the lineal footage of property that abuts the street is, is where a special assessment is based on, and the special assessments on Boone are at a higher rate because it is a new construction, so Boone, the road that's there was a macadam road, which is a little bit of gravel and oil that is, has hardened over time, um, so that it's a new construction with new concrete curb and gutters and new sewers and a new concrete road, so the assessment rate on that one is higher than the resurface of Arthur Avenue.
But if Arthur is, I mean, clearly, your number's up on the screen, you know, we're looking at, what, over $100,000 difference? Uh, I'm sorry, more like 150,000 difference.
Right.
And their street is longer, and their street is shorter.
The assessment rate, it's based on the lineal footage of property that you own that abuts the road.
So if, so my portion is 50 linear feet, my neighbors might be 37 linear feet?
Right, and then your, your assessment would be, would be more, and if your neighbor had 75, their assessment would be higher.
So I pay higher property tax and a higher assessment?
Yeah, it's, it's based on that lineal footage that abuts the street, so, i, i, yeah, the assessment is, um, if you have a, if they have a bigger lot size, yes, it would be a bigger assessment.
As opposed to just taking the number of houses on the street and dividing it evenly?
Well, and that is how West Dallas has assessed for over 100 years, so, to, to do it differently, it's something that some cities do, uh, but that's, that's not how the assessments are, are done here.
Okay.
And in, in most cities, that's not how the assess, uh, special assessments are done.
Well, with all due respect, maybe it's time for a change. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on public hearing number one? All right, we will close our first public hearing, and I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number two.
Resolution considering discontinuing a portion of South 55th Street from West Mobile Street North to West Mobile Street South that crosses the Union Pacific Railroad tracks.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to staff whenever you're ready.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. My name is Steve Sherman, the manager of planning and zoning, and, um, here to discuss the, uh, vacation of, um, a small portion of right-of-way as it crosses the Union Pacific Railroad at 55th Street. This is the, uh, location here. If you're just, just north of, uh, Lincoln Avenue and, and Grant Street on the east side of West Dallas, um, there is a, uh, crossing at 55th Street, and the portion highlighted in red there would be discontinued. It's, um, it's flanked, the railroad, the Union Pacific Railroad is flanked on either side, north and south, by Mobile Street. There's other crossings at 60th Street, I should say, Beloit Road, 60th Street, 57th, and Electric Avenue, and then also Lincoln Avenue, a little bit further south. So, within roughly about three-quarters of a mile, under a mile, you've got six railroad crossings, so, the railroad and, as part of a Beloit Road reconstruction project, that was before the council previously, um, the city had, engineering had applied for federal grants to, um, offset the cost of the reconstruction of Beloit Road between 60th and Lincoln Avenue, and as a result, the crossing at Beloit Road will be, um, will be updated. So the city's getting approximately $7 million to reconstruct Beloit Road in this area. As part of that federal regulation, uh, the, uh, the railroad crossing at Beloit Road will be, will be upgraded. Moving on to, um, the, uh, those federal regulations are also requiring that we take a look at those six crossings within that three-quarters of a mile, uh, one being 55th Street. The, the railroad, um, a, as you say, the federal government and railroad has given us sort of an option to either fix the crossing at 55th Street and bring it up to current standards with the new crossbooks and signals, um, grading and sidewalks and so on, and that would, that would cost a considerable amount of money, um, whereas, or the other option would be to eliminate the crossing altogether, and thus the purpose for this vacation tonight, in terms of a cost savings to the city, and in terms of a numerous amount of crossings within less than a mile, um, we feel it's in the city's best interest to vacate the crossing at 55th Street. For businesses and residents within this area, there are other options to cross, um, you have 57th Street, you have 60th Street, or to the east, you have, um, Electric Avenue and Lincoln Avenue. More so, that Mobile Street parallels the railroad tracks in both north and south sides of, um, of the railroad, and connects those, that, to those other crossings I had mentioned. So, basically, um, this, you know, we're, we're sort of in a position here with the improvement of that Beloit Road, um, corridor, and the improvement to the Beloit Road crossing, the railroad has also brought up the improvement needed or the elimination of the 55th Street crossing, and that's the purpose for the vacation. Here's just sort of an aerial view, bigger picture view of the overall corridor. The other crossings, um, the, um, Beloit Road Crossing, 60th Street, 57th, the 55th Street to be vacated, um, and then also the Electric Avenue. Lincoln Avenue is further, further south on the lower right-hand side of the screen, but, um, but there will still be access to cross the tracks within close proximity. If you go another 750 feet to the, to the west, you're at 57th, if you go about 900 or so feet to the south, southeast, you're at Electric Avenue to cross there. So this has been, has gone through a public, uh, process, a class-three notice. It was introduced to the council back in January, a planning commission met on this item in, in February, recommended approval, and then we're here this evening to, um, to have, conduct this public hearing, um, on, on a decision of pass or fail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Share. Do any members of the common council have questions or comments on public hearing number two?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Vitale.
Yeah, I've been observing really for quite a while the 55th, uh, crossing. First of all, really, the business north of that, you know, they're all going towards Burnham Street because they gotta exit towards, uh, Miller Parkway, so, so the amount of, really, of traffic there is very, very minimum. So, on the other side of the coin, it, what really the, the biggest problem is, the city have to foot a lot of money to maintain their crossing. It's not just, uh, $20,000, we took over $100,000 to, uh, I believe, to improve it or doing, doing something with, with the shoulders, right, uh, the lighting and everything else.
It's quite expensive, about $600,000 if the city were to take this on.
Well, see, I, I mean, I don't wanna say the amount, but that's what Rob, I had a conversation with him, that's what, you know, last time, as far as I know. So, so the amount is so, so extravagant, really, to keep that, uh, road open, you know, the crossing, to me, that's, makes sense, really, to, uh, close it down, 'cause many neighbors, really, they go south, or they live there, or, you know, they go by the traffic light, but there isn't hardly any traffic there, really, the amount is, is very minimum. That's why I'm really, I'm supporting the idea, and the fact that it is, the cost, to me, that's hard to balance, really, it's not the, something the city really should be footing $600,000. If it was a transit, which was a lot of traffic, you know, in a, in a street where it was a lot of traffic, well, then I could see to invest the money, but at this point, I don't think we should really do that, you know? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Vitale. Are there any other comments or questions on public hearing number two?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Haas.
Yeah, and Steve, tell us again, it's the railroad's crossing, why is the railroad not responsible for making these necessary improvements in the crossing?
So, um, it is a railroad corridor, but the city actually maintains right-of-way across the, uh, the rail corridor for that roughly 60-foot wide by, uh, was it 110 feet in length of, of city right-of-way that actually crosses that, that, the tracks. So, you know, the, for pedestrian crossings, for vehicles that cross, um, they would be asking, I guess they gave us the option to, to either, you know, eliminate the crossing or, or fix the crossing, you know, upgrade it to current standards, and the cost of upgrading it to current standards is, is roughly about $600,000, so, just given the redundancy and the number of crossings we have within this short expanse, you know, engineering and planning thought it would be best to, to vacate this situation.
Sure, and I understand where you're coming from, Steve, you're concerned for what's best for the city. What makes me angry, what makes me frustrated, are railroads in general, who are the worst corporate citizens. They don't care for their property at all, they pay zero in property taxes, they typically got their land for free from the government in order to encourage railroads being built in the 1800s, and they don't maintain anything unless they're absolutely required to, and they have laws that are on their side that don't require them to maintain anything, and when railroad property is poorly maintained, if we try to go in and do something about it as the city of West Dallas, what's the response? Is the response from the railroad, "Oh, thank you, city, you, you, you did our job for us"? Quite the opposite, they accuse us of trespassing on their property. It just makes me angry and frustrated that our citizens, our residents, are losing an accommodation, something that we used to have, now we're not going to have it anymore, and I heard Alderman Vitale, Alderman Vitale knows best, it's his district, and that it's, uh, I acknowledge that it's a crossing, that it's not regularly used, or used quite as frequently compared to other crossings, still, it makes me angry at the irresponsibility of railroads. Thank you.
It's as angry as I've ever seen you. But justified, thank you. Any other, uh, comments, questions from the council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Roat.
Alderman Haas left out bridge painting.
Oh, there we go. Any other questions from the council? If not, are there any members in the audience that wish to speak on public hearing number two? All right, we will close public hearing number two. We will move on to section E, which is citizen participation. This is where the council can receive information from members of the public during this 30-minute period. We ask that each speaker announce their name and address, and limit their comments to one statement of no longer than five minutes. We can't take action on topics raised by the speakers, and we cannot discuss the topics with the speakers. Does anybody wish to address the council under citizen participation this evening? The button with the little person on it.
Good evening, my name is Louis Kowieski, I live at 719 South 97th Street, West Alice. I'm here tonight to thank my alderman for actually doing something. For years, I've been trying to correct a situation of, of business utilizing the city's street to their own available, without regard for the public, in my opinion. I've lived there since 1978, one house off a slinger, and we had- I've lived there since 1978, one house off of Slinger, and we had business there at the time Roth Brothers did radiators and starters. One of them died, they got rid of the business. Gordon Tolan came in there, and at that time, the city sent out cards to the neighbors because this was going to be a completely different business. I went there with my wife, she remembers it just like I do, that there was promises made to the residents that with this business operating there, they would have to provide parking for their employees and provide all their own space for their autos on their own property without utilizing the right-of-way of the city of West Dallas. Okay? That's a long time ago. I complained then. Gordon wasn't as bad as what's there now. There's a repo outfit in there that has absolutely no regard for anybody's right to that street. He, he kind of thinks he owns it. He's in cahoots with about three or four other car dealers, and what they do there is they use it as a switching point for vehicles. It's not vehicles that aren't running, it's vehicles being sold to auctions or other, other envoys. For a while there, when we were without streets because of the zoo interchange being, going up, I cut them some latitude because they were just as hindered in operating as I was leaving my house. But then after that superstructure got done, it's God's blessing to the neighborhood because it just speeds up everything. But getting back to the point, ever since that thing has gotten done, he seems to have expanded his ownership of Slinger Avenue. I called up the aldermen, I called up the police department numerous times, and two weeks ago or so, all of a sudden miraculously, no parking signs showed up on both sides of Slinger from 100th to 96th, and I thought, finally, it's over with. Lo and behold, they're out there just like they were before. I called the police department, I called the aldermen, and they've been working on it, and I understand there's a conclusion now. I talked to the city attorney the other day, he thinks there's a conclusion. But I'm here to thank the aldermen for the work that they've done, and I'm waiting to see if the conclusion is the conclusion. The conclusion was to change the seat, there's no parking signs, which when I went to school meant that if I was traversing down the street with a curb and gutter and I pulled over to the curb and I stopped my vehicle, I was parked. Not in today's dictionary, I don't know what dictionary they use nowadays, but when I called the police department, they said they cut them latitude because they're loading and unloading cars. As long as there's somebody inside that wrecker, they won't ticket them. As long as there's business going on, they won't ticket them. I said, well, no parking means no parking. If I pull up on any business along here on Greenfield Avenue or anyplace else where there's no parking sign, I assure you, just like you would get a ticket, I would get a ticket because I'm parking where it says no parking. Police department says they're looking at it different because he has to operate. I'm looking at it different also because when Roth Brothers moved out and the towing company moved in, at that meeting, like I said, they were promised there wouldn't be no use of the city, city right-of-way for the operation of the business because it's such a massive thing of switching back and forth of cars. You can go on to Slinger Avenue, which I refer to as a tunnel now because I think there's 10 or 11 bridges going over there, and true, there's no, through traffic, there's no houses.
Sir, you've got 30 seconds left.
But they utilize it to such an extent that you have.
30 seconds left.
Oh, man, I'm just getting warmed up.
See you next meeting.
Anyway, I, I want to thank you for the work that's done, and I guess all I can do now is wait to see if the new signage is going to take care of the problem. If not, I'll be back.
Thank you, Mr. Kowieski.
Thank you.
You did yield four seconds, just for, so you know.
Say again?
You did yield four seconds, so maybe we'll give you that next time. All right. Anyone else wish to address the council under citizen participation? All right, then we will go to page two on the agendas. Our standing committees will be meeting during recess. The room numbers are listed on the top of page two. Please note that Public Safety and Public Works will be meeting in this room because room 128 is set up for the election for early voting. We already did the mayor's report, so we will go to item H, alderperson's reports. Do we have any reports from the alderpersons?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Haas.
I encourage everyone to attend the school district candidate forum. There are three, strike that, four candidates for three school board positions in the upcoming election on April 4th and this coming Thursday, that is March 23rd, right here in these common council chambers at 6:30 PM. Those four candidates will be taking part in a candidate forum, which will be run by our City of West Dallas Youth Commission. The commissioners have come up with some, some good questions to bring about some, some answers that will, will hopefully allow us to learn about the candidates and allow everyone to make the decision on who to vote for in the upcoming election. So that's this coming Thursday at 6:30 PM, right here.
Thank you very much. Any other reports from the alderpersons?
Mayor Devine.
Alderperson Reinkie.
I want to steal the thunder from the first district of all people, but I want to mention especially that it plays on beautiful first. At Liberty High Park, I call it playground for the young children when I was a, a, a young, a regular back then. Liberty High Park is called Niles, but it had these three, three events for families for children to hunt by, by, the reason I'm mentioning it was.
Although, I'm sorry, Alderperson Reinkie, your microphone's not on.
Sorry?
That's okay.
Oh, you missed it all then. Oh, now I have to repeat, I have to repeat it all again. Oh, first of all, I have to say, please forgive me, alderman in the first district. This is the first district thunder. However, the church that I belong to put together a thousand of the eggs, so I figure I have, I have just a little reason for mentioning this. Please, if you have children, go to Liberty High Park. 5,000 eggs is a lot of eggs for the kids to find, and I'm sure they'll have a ball. Now, it's going to be April 1st from 11 to 1 o'clock. That's only a couple hours, and I'm sure that all of, all of the families will have a fun time because it includes lunch and prizes and games. It's, it sounds like a really fun time, and it's being held by the organization City Light. City Light is an organization that focuses on efforts to help children and their families in the north, northeast corner of West Dallas by providing community events and fostering healthy relationships and providing help to families. So I hope I'm forgiven by the aldermen of the first district, and please, if you know of a family, tell them about this because it sounds like it's going to be a fun time for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other alderpersons' reports this evening? Okay.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move for approval of the minutes of March 7th, 2023, common council meeting.
Second.
Here's a motion and a second. Any changes or adjustments, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. We have no standing committee reports, so we'll go to item K.
Mayor Devine, unless there's objections from any member of the council, I would move that all of the items on item K on the agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
There's a motion with a second by Alderperson Grisham. Is there any discussion or any request for separate action? Okay, hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alderperson Grisham?
Aye.
Haas?
Aye.
Lysick?
Aye.
Reinkie?
Aye.
Roat?
Aye.
Zepansky?
Aye.
Turner?
Aye.
Vitale?
Aye.
Eight in favor, two excused.
Motion carries.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meetings.
Second.
Here's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, we are in recess.
Concrete reconstruction and/or asphalt resurfacing.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Number 31, resolution 2023-0216, resolution considering discontinuing a portion of South 55th Street from West Mobile Street North to West Mobile Street South that crosses the Union Pacific Railroad tracks.
Move to approve. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item 32, final resolution authorizing public improvement by concrete construction, concrete reconstruction and/or asphalt resurfacing in various locations and levying special assessments against benefited properties.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item 33, resolution to vacate and discontinue a part of West Maple Street, west of South 89th Street, and I have a note here from our planning department to hold that for tonight.
Motion to hold.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to hold. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries to hold.
Alderman Roat? Jurn. Alderman Roat?
Yes.
If I may, I just want to thank Rob for going through what you went through this evening. It was a lot, and I think on the other side of things, even though it's not an agenda item, that maybe we can talk about maybe more insight to our citizens as to why we're special assessed and put that out to communications. But thank you, Rob.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Alderman Zepansky.
I think you say it in the, your little presentation, you do it, you know, doing this for 100 and some years, but maybe add in there what the average life is of a road so these people understand that we're at 60, 1967, we're over 50 years old, and that's about the average life of a road before we have to have it replaced. So I understood the guy concerned about We Energies, but We Energies wasn't responsible for it because it was already scheduled to be replaced before We Energies came and did that work because it was probably five years ago, it was planned, right? Yeah, so I think if we clear that up when you were doing these, maybe people would understand more.
All right. Here's a motion and a second.
Yeah, motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries for adjourned.
Who made the motion to adjourn?
I don't know.
Zepansky.
Someone down there.
Someone down there.
Someone on my right.
On the south end of the, of Dallas. Thank you. All right, we have Public Safety Committee. I call to order, all five members are present. Nice, short agenda. We have item 37, 2023-0106, new class D operator bartender application for Delaney Applin, and this is Ms. Applin's third appearance. Welcome. And I believe that we had held this due to some sort of court appearance you had.
Sorry, I should know better. Yes, I went to court last week, so they're basically giving me till May 6th to get vaccinated. We do have what, like the plea offer and whatnot. It is guilty. I did it, there's no question, and I'm taking my punishment. So I, it is going to be pushed back to May 6th. I, I wish we would have resolved it, but I would have had to sit instead of getting vaccinated in the next 60 days.
Okay, Delaney, thank you for coming forward and at least letting us know where you're at, and I appreciate that very much. I have one question, and I believe that you had stated that you are going to be working at the Buzzard's Nest on a Sunday, which you did note that the owners are present, correct? While you're bartending?
Yes.
Are there any other shifts that you were intending on picking up?
I'm not. All I pick up is Sundays. I work Monday through Friday at my day job. It's kind of newer a month, I love it, so Sunday is the only day.
And if I may have clarification from Attorney Decker on this, it is not required to have a bartender's license as long as you are in the presence of the owners or those that are managing? Or can you clarify?
Yes, the supervisors should be around those, so just being present in the room is not exactly enough. It has to be someone who's also going to take responsibility for your actions. So as long as they're willing to say they're supervising you and that they are responsible for your actions, then yes, that's true.
Okay, and to clarify, if I may, you've stated that both the owner and, is it his wife?
They both own it.
Okay, so both owners are playing darts on Sunday nights?
They do, but we have subweeks and darts, we have bye weeks, and so I don't want